Jerem?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Pauls?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Gernat?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Please stand for the pledge and invocation by Councilmember Gary Gernat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know the date has passed, but probably have good history teachers in our memory, and I would hope that December 7th, 1941, is a date that we will remember for a long, long time when the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor. That remembrance was this weekend. Of course, we weren't in session. I would just like to take a moment of silence if we could, please, for those that we lost during that event. Thank you.
City Clerk certified publication of daily record on December 6th, notes for a pure council and regular city council meeting December 10th, 2013. Copy of the opening act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law might only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning orders on final ring and planning board attachments will take items five and six together. Five is ordinance to rezone property located generally 133rd Street, south of Laramore Avenue and north of Meredith Avenue from Philip Reserve District and R5 Urban Residential District to R6 Low Density Multifamily Residential District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eight is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carers?
And there's a communications opposing too.
Public carers on items number five and six are today. Proponents, please.
Eric, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, fellow council members. My name is Terry Business. I'm the managing member of Carter LLC. It's capital K-A-R, capital T-E-R, LLC. The owner of the parcel in question is the 8.1.
I'm requesting a zoning of an R6 PUD. The reason for the R6 over the R5 that it currently is available is that I'm wanting to do stacked flats, and R5 does not allow that particular configuration to be built. And also, I want to do units that are greater than fourplexes. The PUD is to control density, building heights, and setbacks. The stacked flats would allow the units to be built and placed above and below each other. The units, the buildings themselves, would allow a greater number than a number of four in per building. The density, this is considered a low-density project. We could have up to 117 units. We will not exceed that, of course. And then with building heights, we would comply with the R5 regulations for building heights. The buildings that are but the west property line currently would be two-story construction, a walkout buildings. It would be no different than any two-story construction in the residential area of Hillsborough at this time as far as height is concerned. We will comply with all the setbacks that are required in an R5 zoning. If you look at the packet I gave you, we have a drawing for exhibit, it's called Exhibit A. And that would show you the eight-plex units that are going to be on the west side of the property. And the side elevation gives you the idea of the slope of the land from the east towards the west. Exhibit B is the clubhouse. The clubhouse is a one-story walkout building. It consists of office, kitchen, gathering room, baths, a cyber cafe, which the tenants will have access to. Exercise room and storm shelter appropriate for our density. At this time, a pool and other amenities such as that are not being planned. We are providing a, provide a access on the northeast property line for the properties at 4710, 4740, and 4806, south one, or north 132nd Street, to have access in the future if needed from the rear of their property if access to 132nd Street would ever be denied that process. We anticipate doing a walking trail and pet exercise stations, and we will do themed street lighting and appropriate landscaping. This shows the eight-plex units that are on the west property line for purposes of... The drawing that you now see is that of the clubhouse, again, one-story walkout structure as well. So in essence, I'm only asking for the R6 PUD for some specific reasons. One is that we cannot do stacked flats within an R5 zoning, and the units have to be fourplex in configuration. So what I'm wanting to do is to stay within the R5 requirements in total, density, height, setbacks, but be able to do what the PUD would allow and confine me to and hold me accountable to in doing the units in more than a fourplex configuration and be able to stack the flats rather than have them individually mounted onto each piece of ground. I would ask for your approval at this time.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents, public carers closed. Ms. Milton?
Yep, real quick. You've been working on this project for, I think, over about a year. Would that be about right?
Little over a year, but I was planning, went through planning board back in March of 2012.
And prior to my election to city council, you worked with the Hillsborough Homeowners' Association because they had some issues with...
Yes, I met with the neighborhood.
You met with, and there were some issues that they had, but you've worked those out. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And I actually, I called the president of Hillsborough before our meeting just to confirm that, and he did confirm. He said that their initial concerns was that there was enough green space. And also, he said that he wanted to make sure that it just wasn't a plain building. They want to make sure it wasn't an eyesore for the neighborhood. And he confirmed that if you keep the plans that you're offering today, he said the green space is great, and all of the neighbors in Hillsborough liked the look and the architecture. So you're not going to be changing that look at all. Is this the look of the building you're going to have? I think you might have a color. Thank you. And is that the architectural look of the building?
No. Sorry. Initially, it was yes, but I've solicited a new, I have a new architectural firm, and I've been building in Omaha, Nebraska since 1976. I've built a number of high-end homes as well as very economical homes. And I look at this building, at the drawing that was given to me here, and I see a lot of garage doors. Okay? I see something that's not appealing to me in that sense. And I apologize, I have a new architectural firm, Stan Howell, I'm working with now. I was not able to get a colored rendering of the new elevation, but I'll go back to that. If you look at the new elevation, what I've done is I've gone into a country French style of design in which we've tried to accent the entrance system more dominantly with the stone and the beaming that's there, the timbering that's being there. And I've tried to architecturally make the garage doors look attractive in that we have a variety of different types of doors and paneling and crossbuck and arched style so that the doors become a bit of an accent now as opposed to just a plain white panel with no architecture to it at all. So I've done that. And then we have the combination now of brick and stone to highlight the entire main level so that it's going to be more architecturally pleasing. I just couldn't stand the planness of the original drawing, the original concept, as adequate as it was, it just wasn't sufficient in my mind, my mind's eye, to give the architectural feeling that I wanted to give for the area to enhance the drive-through and the drive-by of it as well.
Okay, so you've actually, you've taken your original architectural plan and made it better and incorporated more stone and more brick?
Absolutely.
And that was the concern of Hillsborough, and I think you've met those concerns and they no longer have any issues?
Yeah, I can't build a box. Not my nature.
All right, thank you. And I would ask other council members at this time that they have done a lot of work on this and that Terry has really worked with the neighborhood association and the neighbors around there. Hillsborough is one of the largest neighborhoods in my district. They've got over 2,000 residents in that neighborhood, and they're a very active neighborhood association.
Well, yeah, the 85 Villas to the west, I personally built as well, and we still manage that association. So we're very close, tied in with the neighborhood at this time yet.
And the access from your building, I mean, it only makes sense. People are going to access 132nd Street. Is that right? They're not going to be going through Hillsborough to get out?
Well, we do not have access to 132nd Street. We go from Laramore...
Meredith.
We go Meredith, yeah, Meredith to Laramore on 133rd Street, basically. So we're one block off 132nd to the west.
But you won't be, there won't be increased traffic going through the neighborhood of Hillsborough?
Unless they have some reason to go through a residential area with a lot of trafficking as opposed to 132nd Street, which is much easier access.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Terry, thank you for going the extra mile with the design, the extra design to not make it look like a box or too plain.
Thank you.
Thank you for working with the neighbors. I have seen you before, before this council, many times before, and so your reputation precedes you.
Thank you, sir.
And then thank you for keeping the density down. That's something that's important to a lot of West Omaha neighborhoods and so...
We will stay under the R5 density requirement.
So we appreciate your willingness to work with the neighborhood, and with that, I move the approval.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passed seven to zero. Resolutions, repelling plaits, plat subdivision agreements and special use permits. Item seven is a resolution that's a preliminary plat entitled Ready Mix Road Edition located at 4765 South 135th Street. Long attached conditions hereby accepted. Preparation and final plot is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carer on item number seven is today. Are there any proponents?
I'm Matt Tinkin with Lamprey and Ierson, speaking for Lyman Ritchie. This project is at their Millard plant. Lyman Ritchie has acquired some abandoned railroad property adjacent to their existing facility in the old Millard area. They are asking to plat the property for a future project. A future project would involve a small parking lot on the north side of Oldell Street and then just some expansion of their existing facility to the west, or to the east there of that facility. We have gone before the zoning board of appeals and been granted a waiver since the lot is a non-conforming lot due to the width, and that would be the Lot 1, the long, narrow lot. We just ask that you guys allow us to proceed with our plat.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, public carers closed. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question too. That is in the old Millard section of the city of Omaha. Is that a permanent fixture there, that plant? Is that one of those that can be moved quite easily if necessary?
This plant, I'm not 100% sure on the workings of this plant. I don't see in the foreseeable future that plant being removed. As far as I am aware, it is a permanent fixture.
Okay, because that is a very critical part of old Millard. And a couple of years ago, I talked to a couple of individuals who were associated with this company, and I think they said, well, if the price is right, they would move because, which makes sense. But I see the potential, and we maybe, as a city, may be looking at creating an interesting zone in that area because that has been an interest in the Millard area for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items number eight through 11 are our one case. Eight is resolution to replat transmitter here with entitled Crestline located southeast of 210th Street and Cumberland Drive is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Nine is resolution subdivision agreement is hereby approved. Ten is resolution, the special use permit to allow automotive rentals in a community commercial district is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eleven is the special use permit to allow convenient storage in a community commercial district is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public carers on items number eight through 11 are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Lake?
Good afternoon. Jeff Lake, 2111 South 67th Street. On behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public carers closed?
Mustn't approve.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zeros. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, denouementings being held December 24th and December 31st. Agenda items number 12 through 13 shall be laid over four weeks to January 7th for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, agenda item number 14 should be laid over four weeks to January 7th, 2014. Liquor, item number 15, The Hive, 1207 Harney Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public carer on item number 15 is today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. I'm here with Jay Gardner, who is the owner of The Hive. It used to be up on St. Mary's. He's basically just moving his operation down to 12th and Harney. I alerted him to Councilwoman Milton's, Council Lady Milton's issue regarding noise, and he is, he's here for questions about that. They do have noise meters, and he is very careful and very conscious that they do have neighbors there. So they've been operating through the special permit process for the last two weekends, and they haven't had any problems with that. So, but he can address that. Otherwise, it's the same operation he had at St. Mary's, and we're here for questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, public carers closed. Ms. Milton?
I had one question because I do know that it appears that there are people that live actually above your bar in that building and that there's businesses. So what is it that you do to make sure that you're not going to be disturbing those people, there's not going to be loud music until 2:00 in the morning for people that live or work above there?
Jake Gardner, 1207 Harney Street. We have decibel meters that we have been in constant communication with everyone in the building. That's kind of what this special license was about, was to run a test period and see with our speakers, with 150 people in the room, what it was going to sound like above and below us. And we think that we've done a great job tweaking that. We've been in constant communication with those above us, and they have zero problems.
That's good to hear. Thank you, and thank you for doing that because I think that will be important. I think if you keep that communication going and you make sure that you're concerned about that and you're going to do things to decrease that noise if it becomes a problem, I think that's being a good neighbor.
Absolutely, that's what we did. We've sent speakers back and got new ones in, and we've had our zero put to a limit that's acceptable to everyone in the building.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Kelly, do you have the accountant here today for the Hive Bar?
I don't know. I know, I was...
Is the individual, I see an individual standing in the background?
Yes. He's not the accountant. We, Hem and Way Associates is our accountant firm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Are you Mr. Gardner?
Yes, sir.
I noticed that you had an interesting September of 2013.
I did have an interesting September.
Do I need to be concerned about that?
No, sir. There's no concerns. That was a dramatic miscommunication that has been completely sorted out. I have... If I could, because I represented him, Mr. Councilman, Mike Kelly, for the record. Basically, he had an issue where he parked a car he shouldn't have in the old market. They put a boot on him, and he took it off, not destroying it or anything, but took it off, and then that led to some bouncers from one of the local establishments confronted him, and that led to an altercation. But we've handled it with small fines in court, and it's done with, so...
And going forward, I don't have to worry about a lot of calls?
No, he understood that he could have blown his whole liquor license over that issue, and so we've had a chat. I think he understands that now. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat? Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. It's adopted five, or 601 passing.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
Sixteen is the bottomless glass bar and grill, 17520 Wright Street, Suite 1, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public carer on item number 16 is today. Are there any proponents?
Angela Burmeister, 1301 South 75th Street. I'm the attorney for Ford Enterprises LLC, doing business as the bottomless glass bar and grill. I have with me today Mark Ford, who's the managing member of that entity. He's purchased, this was an ongoing business, and he's purchased the assets of the business.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, public carers closed? Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 17 is Joe's Duck Inn, 13336 Millard Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location, change of stockholders. We have an amendment to extend the first floor area from 48 by 68 to 75 by 68 and to delete the basement.
Public carer on item number 17 is today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, here today on behalf of the applicant. As the city clerk mentioned, we did amend the premises. There was a miscommunication on the diagram that was applied. The nature of this business hasn't changed at all. Actually, the new LLC entity has been actually in operations with the establishment for decades. So no material change in the business, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, public carers closed? Amendment?
The amendment.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. The amendment passes 601 passing. Has amended?
Has amended.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time. Adopted as amended 601 passing. Item number 18 is Harney Street Tavern, 1215 Harney Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public carer on item number 18 is today. Are there any proponents?
My name's Brady Bach. I'm the majority owner of QB Group LLC, doing business as Harney Street Tavern.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, public carers closed. Ms. Milton?
Yes, you're probably in here when I just asked some of these same questions to The Hive Bar, which is going to be your neighbor.
Correct, two doors away.
Two doors, is that right?
Yes.
And I also noticed that there are 12 apartments above your bar.
Correct.
What are you doing at this point for purposes of making sure that that noise is controlled? I see you open at 3:00 PM, so there's businesses that'll still be open from 3:00 to 5:00.
Correct.
But then into the evening, what are you doing to make sure that there's noise control both during business hours and after hours?
Matt Doherty is the developing, the managing partner on that development. There's a commercial bay that buffers in between. We're located in the basement of that space. He's doing a special treatment to the ceiling of the commercial space on the ground level. The residential starts on the second floor, goes up through the fourth. Also, in the lease with Mr. Doherty, we've addressed a decibel level that we have a limit of. Some of you may have seen in the newspaper, there was a little press done on his development, and he talked about us as a jazz bar. We're going to do some live music down in the basement, jazz, other things within that, similar genres. So we don't anticipate being on the louder end of that, you know, live music. We're not going to be doing loud rock and roll, that sort of thing. So in between the decibel limits in our lease for the basement and the buffer of the ground level space between us and the residential, we feel like it will not be an issue.
Have you met with any of the people that live or have businesses above your bar?
It's currently all under the same stage of development. There's no residential in that building right now. It's all being built.
It's all being built, okay.
Yeah, simultaneously with our location. So he's anticipating residential moving in there about the time that we open.
Okay, so, well, I appreciate that, and so when people do move in, I would encourage you to communicate with them.
Absolutely.
Just as kind of the Hive is, it'll just make things better for you in the long run, so we're not getting calls down here that says we're miserable because music is blaring all the time.
Understood. I plan to be a good neighbor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 19 is La Bouillon, 1013, 1015, 1017 Howard Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location, change of stockholders.
Public hearing on item number 19 is today. Are there proponents?
Yes. My name's Paul Kulik. I'm president of 1013 Corp, doing business as La Bouillon, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 20, Tanner's Bar and Grills, 1202 South 119th Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 20 is today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Kelly.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing today on behalf of Tanner's Bar and Grill. This is a similar business plan as the other Tanners across Nebraska. I would like to note for the record, we did receive an inquiry as to parking from other business owners within that shopping center. We're committed to working with them and showing them the parking plan. There is plenty of parking. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes second time for potential conflict of interest. It is adopted six, zero, one passing. Item number 21, Side Door Lounge, Omaha, 353111th Street, Class I liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on item number 21 is today. Are there any proponents?
I'm Tyler Johnson, and I, 2922 Farnum Street, number C. I am doing business as the Side Door Lounge, sole proprietor, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Tyler. Before you, Mr. Jam Rosie opened the business, and it's been a pretty good addition to the neighborhood, and people like bicycling there and walking there in the summer months, and there's a nice outdoor side on the west side of the building. But there were some concerns expressed by the neighbors when the business went in, and Mr. Jam Rosie was a member of the Neighborhood Association, was active in it. Just would ask you if you would also be participating in the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association.
I would love to, yes, and Mr. Jam Rosie and I have been working very closely in trying to ensure that the folks that have been participating with the business, the transfer of that would be seamless. There have been a couple hiccups with the staff, but outside of that, with the community, that's a big initiative and part of my mission with what we're trying to accomplish with the, the bar at the Side Door.
Well, we want to wish you luck, and, and if you could be a member of the Neighborhood Group, I think it's a way of communicating with the, the neighborhoods too, if there are issues going on, so that you can be ahead of the curve rather than reacting.
Certainly. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Milton and I recently talked to some young professionals at your establishment, and my, my question for you is, are you still serving the Amy Milton and Pete Fester's specialty cocktails?
Well, you know, I did not know about them until now, but if that would make everyone smile, certainly.
All right. Like I say, she's smiling.
Not one is very fattening, though. The ice cream, they're very good. We enjoyed that. I enjoyed your place.
Now that Mr. Fester's is not in the congressional game, he might have time for a one or two of those.
Is there any alcohol in that, Mr. Fester's?
I, I did not sample that night. We were speaking.
Okay.
It looked good, though. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 22, The X Lounge at 1604 Northwest Radio Highway, request permission for an addition of their present Class C liquor license, location to add an area approximately 22 by 40 to the south.
Public hearing on item number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Candace Payne, 1604 Northwest Radio Highway. I'm the owner of X Lounge. I'm here to answer your questions. I should have some.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Archie Godfrey, member of the Nebraska Black Chamber of Commerce, address 2505 North 24th Street, here in support of this resolution.
Thank you. Are there any opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Candace, I was wondering when I was going to get a chance to approve something like this. You needed to expand it. Thank God you're doing it. You run a great operation, and very appreciative of, of the kind of operation that you won, that you run, and I was wondering when I'd get a chance to approve this, and I was hoping I'd get to do it before I left, so. Motion approved.
Thank you.
I agree as well. This is right on the border of our, our district, and I think this is a great addition as well.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 23, Native Omaha Club, 3819 North 24th Street, request permission to appoint Sheila Jackson manager.
Public hearing on item number 23 is today. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Sheila Jackson, 4114 North 26th Street, Omaha, and I am now the current vice president of the Native Omaha Club.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
I didn't know. I think I've done.
Last time?
Yeah, that's. But motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 24 through 40 have been passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 41 through 58 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Sorry? He can't hear you for this.
We, we need to screen. His, his, he's back there somewhere. Some guy will.
Hiding in the back, I see.
Bring him down and grill him. Well, well.
He appears to have made it through the vetting process, so.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolutions 41 through 58 are adopted seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number 59, ordinance to establish the Blackstone Business Improvement District, number 6877, for the purpose of providing specific activities, work, and improvements in the Blackstone area, Farm Street, between 36th and 40th, 2nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here in support of the creation of the Blackstone Business Improvement District. Planning Department worked closely with the Law Department, as well as Councilman Jerem, as well as the board members of the Blackstone Business Improvement District, and just asked for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, agenda items, item number 60 shall be laid over four weeks to January 7th for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing, agenda item number 61 through 62 shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item number 63, ordinance to claim necessity appropriating property located at 5014 North 23rd Street for subsequent use by the Consolidated, submission for community planning, action 2013.
Public hearing on agenda item number 63 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Item 64, ordinance approving the amendments to the Article 44 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Omaha and the Professional Firefighters Association, Local 385.
Public hearing on agenda item number 64 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Steve Leclerc, president of the Omaha Professional Firefighters, 6005 Grover Street. I'm here obviously as a proponent today, and I'm available for any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Mark McQueen. I work with Bairdholm Law Firm, act as the city's lead negotiator, and I'm here as a proponent of this agreement. We've talked about it before. It's fairly simple, fairly straightforward, and fairly significant in its financial consequences. Essentially, what we've done is modified the existing agreement, primarily in the area of paramedic training, in order to reduce the cost to the city. The reduction in cost would be approximately $4 million, would allow the city to achieve its 2014 budget. The cost savings are achieved primarily through paramedic training obligations that are detailed in the current contract. What we have done essentially is to reduce the size of the paramedic training classes. There's three scheduled between now and the end of the current contract. We've reduced the size of those classes from what was originally negotiated, 24, down to nine, and we've also reduced the number of those classes. Between now and the end of the contract, at the end of 2014, there was three classes scheduled to be conducted. We've negotiated that number down to two. In addition, we've expanded the job classifications that can satisfy the paramedic requirements for firefighting rigs, and in exchange for those financial concessions, we have, with the union, agreed to not lay off any member of the fire department that was employed as of February of 2013, specifically February 4th of 2013. That was the date that 47 new firefighters were employed. So those firefighters will enjoy the same contractual job protection as the, as the firefighters who were employed on day one of the current contract. We've also agreed not to take any rigs out of service through the expiration of the